I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The town of Burlington will be holding the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the planning board as a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order in March twelfth, two thousand twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code thirty A, section twenty, and extended by chapter twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Now, because the public in particular have interest in a specific item on the agenda, should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you're seeking to participate remotely, you can do so via the following. If you go to webtownofberlingtonwebx.com, the meeting number is two three four six zero three three zero seven five three, and the meeting password is sixteen forty-five. You can join by phone, six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. This is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, Comcast ninety-nine, RCN fifteen, and Verizon Channel forty-one. We're being streamed on Facebook Live on the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during time for public comments. Questions can be asked via WebEx or in the WebEx Q and A function. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves.
We have one item being continued off of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven A out of order for discussion purposes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Item A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point two point one, supermarket of the zoning bylaws, one twenty Cambridge Street, Foodland Supermarket, and is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of February second, two thousand twenty-three, at the request of the applicant in an email dated January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Citizens' time. Item two on our agenda is citizens' time. Each participant will be allotted three minutes and must identify themselves prior to speaking. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda? No one? Announcements, please.
Sure. So, beginning tonight, just, we're all here at six-thirty. From now going forward, we will be starting at six-thirty. This was approved at December first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Upcoming things, Select Board is meeting on January twenty-third at five P M. They're meeting here before town meeting and then rushing over to town meeting. Town meeting is happening at seven o'clock at the Burlington High School, so it's gonna be a packed night. And as far as the planning department is concerned, we are working with consultants to look at Blanchard and Wheeler Road, their bike and pedestrian corridor improvements. And the engineering department recently got a complete streets grant. And so the Select Board, and we're all kind of geared up to look at that and look at sidewalks there. So we're having a public meeting on February first at six o'clock via Microsoft Teams. The link for that is in our, on our socials, and I'll be sending out an email with the link, and that'll be on the website. But the more participation, the better. The, we're looking for feedback from the public, from property owners, from anybody who has an interest in that corridor. So, that's all I have.
Great. Does anyone have any other announcements? Okay, moving on to non-approvals. Item A is the application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval to Maureen Drive. Quinn Builders is the applicant.
So, I can explain this, the applicant is here, but it's, I color-coded it for you guys. So basically, there are two lots, and right now, there's a house with an existing lot on it. And there's a drive, and to get to the house, you need to go, there's an easement on the driveway to get access to this number-two Maureen Circle. And so basically, he is tilting the lot line, pivoting the lot line, so that the people at this house don't need to access their driveway through an easement. So he's kind of cleaning up the land, as it were. And so, this is an approval-not-required plan, so for newer members of the board and A and R, under subdivision control, basically means approval-not-required to file a subdivision. So this is not, this does not require a subdivision because it has frontage on a completed right-of-way. If it was on an incomplete, incomplete right-of-way, they were adding brand-new lots, or it was on a paper street, it would be required to file a full subdivision. But you guys are gonna sign the, once you vote, you're gonna sign the Mylar stating, approving it, and saying, you know, yes, we don't think this requires full subdivision application. So, that's just a little background on that. And if you have anything you want to add?
I think you said it all.
Thank you for coming, because most people need to come.
I figured it was a question.
Yeah, thanks for coming, yeah. And so, yeah, questions, comments, concerns on this one?
I don't have anything. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan believed to not require approval on behalf of Quinn Builders Company for two Maureen Drive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Administrative matters.
That was easy.
Right? Yeah, I'm gonna watch the Celtics tonight. Item A is a discussion application for approval of a minor engineering change, forty-five Blue Sky Drive. Norvom Company is the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Todd Fremont Smith with Norvom Company, and with me tonight is Rob LaBosier, who's an asset manager on the asset, Blue Sky Drive. We're here tonight for two minor engineering changes at the former Network Drive campus, which is the former Sun campus. One involves the construction of a pickleball court as an amenity for the tenants at the park, and the other is a conversion of an outdoor amphitheater into more of a outdoor seating area that could be used by corporations for meetings. So, they're two minor, as the board knows, these are trying, these are confusing times for the office market. We're faced with a lot of headwinds that we hadn't seen before, and we're just trying to elevate the park and build as many amenities as we can for the tenants who do come to work to enjoy being at this, at this million-square-foot office park. Things are going well on other fronts up there. We've got the Broad Institute and Vericel Corporation, two hundred and seventy thousand square foot lab building under construction, as the board well knows, which will be finishing up about a year from this summer. So it's a huge project. You can see it rising up as you drive on Middle Sixth Turnpike, a huge investment in Burlington. And the campus is relatively well-leased, and we're seeing pretty good activity for the market. We're seeing good tour activity for new tenants who are seeking to, there's a real flight to quality in the office market, where people are, as they try to get their employees to come back to work, particularly high-tech employees, which don't seem to want to come back to the office, they're seeking out the best, best-in-class office campuses in places like Burlington. So we're seeing good activity, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to reinvest in the, in the asset. Rob's also hired an interior decorator to redecorate the entire winter garden. Some of the board will remember, it's feeling a little bit dated at this point, so we're gonna be spending millions of dollars renovating the winter garden as well. That's inside the building. So, Rob is here and is happy to take you through the slides if the board would like.
Thanks.
So, yeah, where we are here, I think Todd kind of summed up the first few slides, but I'm Rob LaBosier, so that's the only thing he's talking about. So, two projects that we're, we've got the two applications in. First, first we'll talk about the amphitheater, which is in the lower right, and then we can talk about the pickleball. So, if you go to the next slide, please, so actually, one slide up, yeah. So the landscape architect that we're working for, that's working with us for these projects, MDLA, you may be familiar with them. They've done all, every, all the work on campus, so all the work around twenty-five and twenty-seven where Broad is going and a lot of the other places. This is an example of some completed work on campus. So, working with a partner of ours that's done a lot of very good work for us already, that you can see existing on campus. So going to the next slide. So this is the amphitheater area that we're looking to enhance here. This is the current existing condition, so this is kind of in the core of the courtyard, surrounded by four of the seven buildings on campus. And again, we're really trying to create an area for tenants, two functions really, to have the outdoor meeting spaces, which is really what we're seeing in the market now. Now abstaining in the fact that, you know, where we are, COVID, people want to be outside and want the opportunity and availability of outdoor meeting spaces. So, going to the next slide, you'll see how we're gonna kind of set this up. So, the space is gonna be twofold, kind of the proper, kind of amphitheater meeting space, presenting space for corporate meetings. And so, again, MDLA did this rendering for us, so it'll be some regrading, some additional seating built into the hillside that's there, and then the kind of a stage area, if you will. And then some landscaping behind it to kind of delineate that presentation area from the office building, the office spaces that are immediately behind it. Next slide, I believe, is just a different perspective, so that's kind of looking from the top of the hill down into the amphitheater, and you can see the proximity of the building behind it again. So we're just gonna try and create some visual barrier there from the offices immediately behind. I think it's worth mentioning, this will all be ADA accessible as well. So you see that sidewalk kind of trailing off to the left, and if you go to the plan view, I think it might be a little bit easier, yeah, that, next, yeah. So, trailing off to the left, yep, that would be the handicap, or ADA accessible access to that, to that amphitheater. And then included, the next slide, if you go down, and actually, one other thing I'll point out, this, in this plan view here, you see the seating's a little bit different. That might be the kind of day-to-day seating, kind of casual, go out, have a little collaboration meeting with just a couple or a few people. So, you know, it'd be kind of multipurpose, this space. Next slide, there is just the red line that's submitted with the M E C application, just highlighting the different areas that we'd be touching as part of this project. So that's it for the amphitheater. Does anyone have any questions, or?
Please. So how many, how many seats do you think that this would host?
That's a great question I don't have with me. It's in the dozens, but not hundreds.
So, you know, I'm thinking Broad Institute, are they going to have seminars there? Are you going to, I mean, a couple of questions. Would they have seminars there, assuming this is available to all tenants within that complex?
Correct. Yep, all tenants in the complex. We're thinking that because this is outdoor, it may not be huge events, and we're not thinking of rock concerts or anything of that nature. And we do have indoor spaces that can seat hundreds of people. So, this is gonna be kind of the in-between space.
Okay, I was just thinking, you know, if there's an all-hands meeting or something along those lines, would it be, you know, are we talking fifty people? Are we talking a hundred and fifty people? Obviously, because there are no real boundaries. You could always add seating. So, I mean, I guess it's not a concern, it's more of something that, you know, I would be interested in learning more about. Would you, would this be restricted specifically for tenants? Or would you be renting this out to other entities?
For tenants.
Just for tenants?
Tenants, yeah.
And would you have that as a restriction? Like, would this sort of be like the Marion House that would be rented out? Could we restrict that? Is that something we would want to do?
I mean, it's a campus amenity, I can't imagine people having weddings here or.
You never know.
You never know. It's our intent to just use it as a campus amenity.
Okay. It's pre-existing, so.
What are the hours? Is it just daytime use only, or will there be night lighting?
We're not adding any, I mean, there's gonna be some functional lighting around the walkways, but no, no other lighting to speak of. So it really would be, you know, daylight hours, normal business hours.
I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else?
Okay, let's talk about pickleball.
Like what else is? So. So here we have just a shot of the existing condition. So, the pickleball court, the way we're citing this is really within the boundaries of the amenity center outdoor space. So we've got existing patio, bocce courts, and this is some lawn space right now, kind of serves as cornhole area. So we're, yeah, this is a better picture of the aerial. So you can see the shade sails, the paved area, and the, kind of the right-hand side, that light white box is, is the area. Can you see it there, on the, on the right-hand side? Yep, exactly, there. So, right now, so it's within the, kind of, again, the confines of that outdoor space that we have for the amenity center. And what we'll be doing as part of this project, the court will go there, but it's also allowing for some longer and larger lawn space that we'll also then kind of use for the lawn games, the court hole and things like that.
So it's important, this is an on-campus amenity that is behind the gate. It's inside the fence of, which is existing there today, so it's not.
Again, just for the tenants?
Correct. Yeah, this is for tenant use, yep. So, yeah, you've done the aerial, yeah, and this is just, you know, what the court will look like. So it's, it is a plastic material that gets kind of snapped together, weather-resistant and what have you.
Is it impervious? Does water go through it?
The, so no, there is a note on the plan about the impervious area that we are creating, but it will be, you know, pitched in a manner that would kind of run off to the, to the sides.
So pickleball court, as the board probably, probably knows, is about a quarter, quarter of the size of a tennis, tennis court. So relatively small.
Yep.
I don't get it personally, but everyone's doing it, so.
It's the new thing.
Oh, sorry. Maybe I should try it. Well, close space for me. It's terrible, it's a terrible game.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
Just, just a couple, thank you, Madam Chair. Is there gonna be a fence around that?
So, once we're complete, completed that, yeah, we will, because you'll see in some of the areas, there is an existing metal steel fence that will come down as part of this, and then we'll, we're still debating whether we do just with landscaping or if we do reinstall the fence on the kind of perimeter of the lawn, between the lawn and the existing walkways.
I guess my question is, around the pickleball area itself?
Oh, yes, around the, yes, yeah. Pickleball court itself does get, I think, I forget if it was a six-foot fence or a four-foot fence.
And is there gonna be lighting there, so for evening use?
We're not planning on putting lighting there.
Anyone else?
The only comment I have from the, you know, planning staff perspective is that this, you know, any additional impervious would be added to the entire, the region for the P D D, that we would make sure that that's like added on to the overall park.
Okay, of course, yeah.
That's all I have.
Madam Chair, just one more. I know that the town meeting approved, I think, four buildings and maybe two parking garages, and the recreation department is in conversation, I think with Nobum, about having maybe something like a MITRE-type of arrangement where there'd be multiple pickleball courts. Because one pickleball court actually doesn't make sense. What I would suggest, you know, as a player, that you actually have some benches right near it, you know, whether it's right outside the fence, there's some shading area there too, but maybe it's across, you could do that next to the building. Usually, you just don't have the four players there. So, you know, you typically have more than one and then mix up the play there, but, you know, to limit your space there, it's, it's just a bit unusual to have the one court, but again, it's just for your tenants there. But in the future, if you're gonna come before us for buildings or parking garages, I would recommend that you have a plan for, you know, talking to the recreation department about putting multiple courts up, and I'd suggest eight. So it'd be beneficial to the town. You folks here would be beneficial, since Lifetime is right down the street, and if you talk to your folks at Lifetime, they're actually sponsors of tournaments, so you could kind of think that with eight courts there, the Lifetime, you could actually make this place the pickleball center of the northeast and have tournaments versus out in.
That's what I'm worried about, but I hear your, I hear the concern.
You've got the amenities on third half.
Yeah.
Right, the hotels, and so you could actually, you'll play that up quite a bit. Versus, I think, right now, they have it at a country club out in Grafton, I think.
Interesting, okay, okay.
Now, I think it could be a benefit to you if you have someone on your staff that might even play to give you some insight of what could potentially be there if you think up a little bit.
We do, yeah. And the staff has mentioned this to us, I'm not sure this is the right location.
No.
It might be somewhere at Northwest Park or someplace more public. This is actually, I'm afraid to send people up here at night and on weekends, because it's, it's not like Northwest Park, there are all cars moving through, their police are coming to check on it, and I see people pushing babies now, I mean, it's become a real neighborhood.
Yeah.
So I hear the passion for pickleball, and we'll continue to work with the staff.
Thank you.
Try to accommodate.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a motion.
We have me two motions.
Okay, so we'll start with.
Start with pickleball one?
Sure.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at forty-five Blue Sky Drive to install a single pickleball court for use by employees of tenant firms at Blue Sky Center as reflected on the site plan entitled Network Drive Sport Court Burlington, Mass., prepared by Michael D'Angelo Landscape Architecture LLC, consisting of two sheets dated October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, subject to the following revision terms and conditions. Do I have to read through all of them?
No.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May I say one more thing, just to bring the board up to speed?
Sure.
Because there's no one behind, no one behind me. From time to time, we've talked about public art at Northwest Park. I know that the former chairman, chairperson was very involved in that. We have finally reached an agreement with New England Sculpture Association to start that program, so we're gonna be doing one of these, one of the sculptures every year. There's a budget of about thirty thousand dollars a year that we've established to do that, so we'll keep the staff up to date as to where. There was a location at Lifetime Fitness that was pre-approved. Maybe we start there, but it is our intention to try to build that out as well, so.
Very cool.
Nice.
Thank you.
Dick, you could definitely keep staff informed and put that on our social media.
First sculpture should go up late fall.
Wow.
Great.
Second motion, please.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at fifty-five Blue Sky Drive to reconstruct the existing terrace lawn and provide two levels of terrace seating, a defined presentation area, enhanced landscaping as reflected on the site plan entitled Blue Sky Drive Amphitheater Burlington, Mass., prepared by Michael D'Angelo Landscape Architecture LLC, consisting of two sheets dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Have a good night.
Should've waited for that, thanks.
It's good to see you.
You too.
Okay. Okay, so, we don't have any matters of appointment tonight?
No.
We have some minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. I have a motion.
So, are they on there? So we, so we got some edits for the minutes, so we wanted to edit the minutes, send them back out to you, and then we're gonna vote on them at the next meeting.
Okay.
You're good.
All right. Other, other matters then?
Other matters then, so discussions. So Scott Weiss, who works at the chair's company, came in. They previously permitted a, an office and lab building at three hundred Summit, if you recall. It is behind the Best Buy. I think he, you know, he said in his cover letter, you know, due to the office market, it's a, it's a, it's a building that we built for a specific tenant. And so, he is requesting an extension of his special permit and site plan to twenty twenty-five. And so, you know, he's, he's on it, he wants, they want, they're looking for a tenant, but once that tenant comes, they'll get underway.
Okay.
So we do need a motion to continue that, if you please.
I have a please. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the planning board hereby grants a two-year extension of time from January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, to January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, to complete the required special permit and site plan improvements at three hundred Summit Drive as requested by the applicant in a letter dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain. Just again, Blanchard.
Can I ask you a question, though?
Yes, yes.
That falls, that fell under discussion.
Where does it usually fall?
Well, in other words, if it's discussion, are we taking a vote? Is it something that was, we should be taking a vote on if it's just for discussion?
Next time I will put it in matters of appointment?
Yeah.
Is that where I should be putting it? All right. Don't do many of them.
Yeah.
Next time, thanks for the heads up.
That's all right.
So we talked about Blanchard Wheeler.
So, Melissa Tantaklis and I, we're doing Form Based Code in Middle Sixth Turnpike Mall Road. They're starting, they're getting going, so they're looking for volunteers to be part of like the core working group. There's gonna be people from, I think there's gonna be twenty people, and from all facets of town politics, private sector, everybody. And I know that Jess has volunteered.
Signed up for the advisory board.
So, I think it would be in our best interest to have at least two people sign up for those. I think that Wednesday evening meetings, I think maybe once a month, maybe more as it gets going, but right now, just gonna throw that out there to see if anybody's interested in doing that.
Do you know if the meetings are hybrid?
I don't know if there's a difference between like volunteers versus advisory board, like working group versus advisory board, but I, what she's asking for is commitment in person at some of the bigger meetings that are coming up in March. There's one in February, early February, and then there's one March first, and a couple in March where they're, they're like working sessions with the public. And she wants.
She wants to do charrette.
She wants to do charrette, and people who are involved, she wants to be there to be able to represent.
Don't everybody jump at once.
It's exciting, guys, we're planning.
It's a very exciting project.
It's a super exciting project. So, just think about it, she'll reach out, I'm sure she'll reach out, but that's something to think about. The next thing is ending of remote meetings.
So what does this mean?
This means, well, for, so we got an advisory from town council yesterday that I reviewed, and I kind of knew it, but what it basically means is we can still host hybrid meetings, members of the board can still, you know, participate remotely. There are, like, there are things that you need to know, though, there are particular stipulations. A forum of the board needs to be here in person. If a member is, is participating remotely, they need to let the chair know, and the chair needs to make an announcement at the beginning of the meeting. Member Joe Smith is working, is taking this meeting online and will be joining us, you know, via WebX. You know, they're, they're under the weather, but they still want to participate. And so, that's what we need, you guys need to know. As far as the public is concerned, they can still participate remotely, you know, if they're, if we have an applicant that, you know, has representation here, but there, maybe their architect is somewhere else, and da-da-da. It's just, we have a lot of, you know, national, national clients, more so than I think other communities do. So, as long as a forum is present, we're good.
Great.
Yes.
Question? Does that mean, so say all the members are present?
Yes.
Will it still be held, will there still be remote access in case somebody in the public wants to do it, or not?
I mean, as, you know, I mean, I have my opinion, but I mean, it's between, you know, it's up to the chair. You know, I, as a planner and, you know, public official, I think the more people that are able to access what you do, it adds legitimacy to what you're doing, they understand the process more. People who are at home, who are homebound, who have kids, who wouldn't otherwise be able to participate can come. You know, it adds certain efficiencies to some meetings. That's, but that's, it's ultimately up to the chair, and that's a conversation that we can definitely have going forward. But, you know, it's, there's, there's pro and cons on both sides, obviously. Sometimes there's disruptive people in the audience online, sometimes, you know, so we have to, we have to kind of take that balance.
Great. What's next? Town central electronics sign update. Ernie, would you like to do the honors?
Sure, I can try, thank you, Madam Chair. So we held a meeting last week, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. With two people from the Board of Selectmen and a person from the Board of Appeals, Jeff, Jeff, is that his name?
Yep, Jeff DeBona, C D A, C D R C.
And Town Administrator Paul Sagrino was there also. Had, they had a little mock-up, somebody had taken the trouble to, to put together possibly what a picture of the sign might look like, and, and I think a few people said, wow, that kind of looks a little bit like Town Hall. So I think that's the, the design that's gonna go forward, something that looks like it. In other words, it has a little, little roof over the sign and a couple of columns, and it looks a little like Town Hall. Talked about the size.
Yep, the brick base, so we haven't determined the size yet, because we need to go out there and measure.
Right. Somewhere in the four-by-eight area, I believe, is, you know, roughly, but I think, actually, I think Jeff and Brenda were going to see if they could figure out what size really works so that you could read it from your car. Other than that. Other than that, uh.
Is it two-sided, single-sided?
No, it's single-sided. Uh, on the corner, roughly in the same position where the B N O was, um, depending on, exactly depending on what has to be moved and can be moved.
Utilities and such.
Utilities, right, uh, but, you know, with, with the, the colonial feel, as we, you know, the town center colonial feel, uh, brick, white columns, maybe a little white roof-type thing, uh, and, uh, some maybe landscaping around the bottom. Thank you, sure, uh, looking presentable and not offensive is the idea.
That's good.
Any discussion on keeping in the language of holograms and video and?
We didn't get into that yet, we were just looking at design.
Yeah.
It was our first meeting, so we just looked at design, um, at that point, and once we, you know, once we get through that, then we'll start working on.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was a realization, Bill, that, that holograms and, and video-type things might not be appropriate for that particular location because, you know, you don't want to distract the drivers.
Right, so did they change the language in the, in the bylaw then?
Uh.
To be presented to town meeting, because?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thanks.
I think the bylaw reflects the fact that there will be, uh, a, uh, what do you want to call it? Protocol developed by the Selectmen, which would be part of, uh, what we were trying to do.
Well, actually, in the bylaw, it actually states that it's allowed for the holograms and videos, and so i- if it allows it, then it can happen, so.
Gotcha, yeah, I think it would be.
Regardless of any sort of.
No, that one, that wasn't discussed, but.[1730.45]